Council meeting this, the third day of December 2020 to order, and I would ask Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Drapkin.
President.
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Geary.
Merry Christmas.
Counselor Sassenz.
Here.
Counselor Peralta. Counselor President Minke.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia. This evening, we are continuing our public hearing to consider ordinance number 5098, an ordinance that will amend the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan map by adding 862.4 gross acres, or 662.4 gross buildable acres, to the urban growth boundary, which will be referred to as a UGB. Assign new comprehensive plan map designations to all land within the city's UGB, amend the comprehensive plan policies, goal, and proposals, and amend the McMinnville Municipal Code, Section 17, the zoning code. This is our third night of public testimony for this proposal. The city council is considering this proposal as a response to a remand order from the Land Conservation and Development Commission and the Court of Appeals for the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan that the McMinnville City Council first adopted in 2003. Since this is a response to a remand from a project that was initially started in 1994, the city council is considering one final set of issues associated with this project, which will be the subject of the public hearing tonight. I want to thank everyone who has joined this public hearing for their participation, as the Oregon Land Use Goal Number One is citizen participation. The intent of this goal is to provide an opportunity for citizens to participate in the land use decision-making process. However, land use decisions are a legal decision impacting real property, and the city of McMinnville and the McMinnville City Council are held to rigorous statutory and local requirements about how to make land use decisions, so that the decisions and process are transparent and fair to all. The city council must make their decision based on the federal, state, and local regulations governing the project at the time that it was submitted. All decisions must have legal findings based on whether or not the land use proposal meets the criteria of the Oregon state laws, the McMinnville City Code, and in this case, the decision of the Oregon Court of Appeals. All testimony in this hearing must be considered with the Oregon state laws, the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan, and the Court of Appeals decision in mind, as provided in the staff report and proposal. The city council's decision must be in compliance with those regulations, and the city council must adopt findings that demonstrate how their decision is in compliance with those regulations. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements, evidence, or a solution sufficient to afford the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the ability to object to the city's council's decision to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. The order of procedure for tonight's hearings are set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask anyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order that they had signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present at the civic hall would like to testify, and then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. After people testify, counselors may pose questions to the mayor to be addressed by the person who testified, or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone after the three nights of scheduled public testimony, and the city council is satisfied it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the city council will then choose a public hearing, or close the public hearing, deliberate among themselves, and announce the decision. Since this is a periodic check, review work tasks issued by the Department of Land Conservation and Development in 1994, the final decision of the city council will be reviewed by DLCD staff, and people who participated in this public hearing process can provide their objections to the city's council's decisions to the Department of Land Conservation and Development at that time. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone else before you has said, but you want to convey that you have legal standing in the public record, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has previously been said. Outside of staff, public testimony will be limited to five minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. Please be sure to keep your testimony relevant to the appropriate state and local regulations that govern growth planning. Since this is a legal process for considering a land use decision, we need you to state your name and your address for the public record, so that we can, so you can receive written notice of the city council's final decision.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just want to state for the record that Counselor Peralta has joined the meeting.
Thank you, Claudia, and welcome, Sal. Tonight's continued public hearing is for ordinance number 5098, docket number G6-20, adopting the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan that will amend the city's UGB, the Comprehensive Plan map, and the Comprehensive Plan and the McMinnville Municipal Court relative to planning and zoning. The city council is considering the recommendation of city staff of a remand of the city's original McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan that was adopted in 2003. This 2003 plan was adopted after a significant amount of community input and public hearings with the McMinnville Urban Area Management Commission, the McMinnville Planning Commission, and the McMinnville City Council. We will now continue the public hearing. Does anyone wish to object to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Hearing done, we will then ask staff to give a presentation of the proposal.
So, good evening, Mayor and counselors. My name is Heather Richards. I'm the Planning Director for the city of McMinnville. We will be giving a presentation that some people have probably seen before. We do this every night in case there are new people at the public hearing, and I am aware that there are several new people with us tonight. So, this will be much shorter than the presentations you've seen in the past, hopefully. And what we're going to do is try to hit the highlights of the proposal that we brought to you and the decision-making that's in front of you at city council, and then leave the evening for public testimony. So I am going to share my screen with you to give the presentation. Hopefully. Okay, so our project this evening is called Growing McMinnville Mindfully. What we are doing is responding to a court remand that occurred in 2011 that went to the state, and the state then remanded it back to us. The remand was based on a 2003 plan that was adopted by the city council and the city of McMinnville for a UGB urban growth boundary amendment, to bring more land into our urban growth boundary. We're calling this Growing McMinnville Mindfully because we feel that this has been a fairly, very thoughtful approach to McMinnville's need to grow. We have to, by state law, plan for growth for 20 years, and we are given the population in which to grow through a state planning process as well. The project website is www.growingmcminnvilmindfully.com. We've been updating that daily with testimony that we've received and any documents that are on the record, and the legal record for this project for the last 20 years is on there as well. So the ordinance in front of you adopts the McMinnville Growth Management and Urbanization Plan. This is the plan that was, for the most part, put together between the years of 1997 and 2002, and adopted by the city council in 2003. It was repealed in 2013 when the city decided, after getting the remand back from the court, after about 10 years of trying to work through this process and challenges and opposition, that they were going to let it pause for a while. We did go through the process of repealing it because it had not been successful. So that's why it's here for you tonight, to move forward in terms of this ordinance. Where we've made changes in this plan, we've indicated that by putting green boxes in the plan that talk about what the 2020 update does, and then the rest of the original plan is kept in full within this document. It adds land to the urban growth boundary, so that's been the primary topic of conversation, is the additional land that it adds to the urban growth boundary. The ordinance would also assign comprehensive plan designations to that land that's in the urban growth boundary, and there's been some confusion as to what that means. A comprehensive plan designation for land that is outside the city limits but inside the city's urban growth boundary is not a zoning process. It doesn't rezone anybody's property. The property still operates under county zoning and county regulations, and the property still moves forward, as is, within that realm. And it's only when the property owner decides that they want to annex into the city that a city zone is put on that property. It adopts and/or amends selected comprehensive plan goals, policies, and proposals, and for the most part, these are goals, policies, and proposals that were developed by the community back in the early 2000s and adopted by the city in 2003, and then repealed again in 2013, when the city decided after 10 years that they wanted to take a break on the project. And then it also amends Section 17 of the McMinnville Municipal Code, which we call the zoning ordinance. And again, those amendments are mostly what the community has already put together and was adopted by the city in 2003. The plan itself has seven appendixes. Six of them are original to the plan. I think what I haven't done very well in the past two nights is describe what's actually still legally on the books in terms of these documents and what was repealed with that ordinance in 2013. So the plan document was repealed. Appendix A and Appendix B remained on the books. So that is the population forecast, the housing needs analysis, the economic opportunity analysis, and the land need analysis. And then Appendix C, D, E, and F were all repealed by ordinance 4961 in 2013. And that's due to the fact that the remand came back and said, "City, you need to do some more work." And so the city chose to remove those elements from our documents and our comprehensive plan. And then Appendix G is what we're bringing to the table as a new addition to this work, which is called the Framework Plan and Area Planning Process. And we're bringing that to the table as an implementation methodology based on what we've heard, both from the opposition to this plan over the years and also from the community in terms of the need to do more planning before property comes into the city, to make sure it's meeting the city's needs and also the city's values. So the Court of Appeals remand, the petitioners, so the petitioners are the opponents who appealed this project into the Court of Appeals. They submitted a petition that had three assignments of error associated with it. So they said the city, the state, the state adopted the city's plan and approved it. Erred in three ways. It erred in terms of how it selected the land to be in the urban growth boundary, the new land to be in the urban growth boundary. It erred in terms of its calculation of the amount of parkland needed for the city to serve the next 20 years, and it erred in terms of the calculation of the amount of high-density residential land needed. The court rejected the second and third assignment of error without further discussion. So the court said the petitioners' submission of assignments of error for amount of parkland needed and amount of high-density residential land needed was that the city had not erred in that regard, but the city had erred in the regard of the selection of land. And so the court remanded that, and what that means is the court said, "We're not saying it's wrong. We're saying the city followed the wrong process when they were selecting their land, and we want them to rework it." And then the court told us how they want us to rework it. And so that is what is on the table this evening and has been brought to you as a proposal, is how we select the land and the methodology we use for that in terms of the map that's in front of you. So we're working within a data set of 2003 that is part of this original planning effort. And as I described, Appendix A and Appendix B, which have the adopted population forecast, housing needs analysis, and economic opportunity analysis, which are all documents that we use, and we have to do a very scientific methodology to figure out what is our housing need in terms of new units of housing to serve our future population, and what's our job need to serve that future population. Those are all, we're all adopted and stayed on the books in terms of how we went through our process. So we're using those final conclusions in this effort. So the population target is 44,055 people. That's what this planning effort is for. In 2003, McMinnville was a community of 28,500 people. We are now 34,000 people. When this was first put together in 2003, the differential between our population target was 15,500 people, more or less. And so we said, 9,000 of the new people that we're planning for are going to find homes and jobs within the existing city limits and urban growth boundary. The planning effort for what we can't serve in terms of the additional people outside that 9,000 people is in this UGB amendment, and that's 6,500 people. And that equates to housing units of 3,500 housing units within the existing city limits in UGB that would be absorbed there, and then the 2,500 would be what we would be looking for in terms of a UGB amendment to serve them. So in the end, after doing the calculus, the city has gone through this twice now, and the first time we submitted in 2003, the state approved it, and 259 gross buildable acres were not challenged by opponents. So that was allowed to come into our urban growth boundary. This Phase Two, the remaining effort for this project, is coming to you with 662.4 gross buildable acres as the recommended UGB amendment. So Phase One and Phase Two together to serve this population need of housing units and employees is 921.4 gross buildable acres. And we talk about in gross buildable acres because we are looking for acreage that we can build on, and there's acreage that's in flood plains that we don't build on or on steep slopes. So this equates to 1,280 gross acres. The first semittal that we did in 2003 is the map that you see in front of you. All the areas that are in green and pink were the UGB semitals. So we submitted this to the state and said, "We want to bring in all the land that's in green and pink around the city's limits into the city as our future urban growth boundary that we grow into." So an urban growth boundary in Oregon, if it's not in the city limits, is land that the city grows into. You can't annex city into a land. You can't annex property into a city unless it's in an urban growth boundary. That's kind of the pipeline for future development. And so we said all this land would be that future pipeline. At the time, it was opposed and challenged, and the only land that was allowed to be brought in is everything that's in green. And so that's three residential areas, and then this second high school site, and that equated to 259 gross buildable acres. So we still had outstanding land need, and the rest of this land was not allowed to come in. That's what was challenged. The proposal before you tonight is fairly similar to the original proposal, except it has a few differences in it, and that's because we did follow the methodology that was outlined in the Court of Appeals remand decision. And what we are suggesting as the proposal for Phase Two of this UGB amendment is land down here in the southwest area, a piece of land up here that's nestled in between the second high school site and the existing city's UGB, and then a couple parcels scattered around along here. And this equates up to 662.4 gross buildable acres. The Court of Appeal gave us a roadmap on how to go through this process, and it was very specific about it. And so that's what we did. We followed it to the letter. We felt like this was the last piece that the city needed to get through in terms of being able to succeed with the urban growth boundary, and we wanted to make sure we stayed within the lanes as much as we could to be able to get there. So this first step was determining the land need, and that was explained in Appendix A and Appendix B. The second step was, we then had to look for land to achieve that land need, and we looked at land from the state's statutory requirements for what was considered adequate land first. And then based on that adequacy, we then took that land that had been screened, and we looked at it for suitability. The land need that we were looking for for this whole effort is a total of 924 acres to serve that need within that planning horizon. But what I want to point out here is that in McMinnville, we have only a couple of comprehensive plan designations. And so we have a residential comprehensive plan designation that covers everything from housing, parks, schools, churches, government facilities. And so all of that is included in this residential land need. And then we also had 106 acres that was calculated as need for commercial development. That would be our employment need. And then based on the analysis, it showed that we had 46 acres of surplus of industrial land. If you take that original land need that was calculated, 924, and you subtract the first phase of the UGB amendment, our remaining amount of land that we calculate we needed was 665 acres. So when we started looking at candidate lands around the city, we were looking for 665 gross buildable acres. And this shows how that ends up in terms of the residential need, commercial need. So in the end, we ended up with 38 study areas. We chose them based on the fact of adjacency to the city limits, city UGB that exists today. You have to be contiguous to the city limits to be able to annex into it, and then also based on soil. So a large part of Oregon's land use law is that you can't expand into property that is set aside for agricultural uses and farm uses unless it's a last resort. Now here in McMinnville, we are surrounded mostly by only farmland, and so we end up having to look at that eventually. But there are other areas that we need to look at first, which is what we call exception land, and that's the areas that are already developed around the city that are in the county that aren't being farmed yet. So this is a great example. Up here, a lot of people know it as Bun's Village. That's not being farmed. So that's land that we need to look at first when we're looking at land where to expand. When we look at that land, we need to look at it from a perspective of, will it meet our future need for redevelopment? So we're not looking to bring in land that has 6,500 people on it to meet that 6,500 need that we have. We're looking for land where we can redevelop it and add that many new homes to that land to serve future population need of 6,500 people. We have to look at it from this classification of soils. So we're surrounded by high-value farmland. So we took it a step further, and there's different classifications of high-value farmland, Class 1 being the highest value farmland in terms of being the most productive, all the way down to Class 6, which is the least productive in terms of high-value farmland. And this chart shows that yellow here is for what's surrounding McMinnville, is Class 3 and Class 4. And then anything in red is Class 1 and Class 2. Those areas in green are those exception areas that I described. So we looked at green areas first, yellow areas second, red areas third. Using what the court told us to do, which is to look at all that land through the lens of science. So the lens of science was, we have to look at it from, can we serve it with infrastructure? And what's the cost to serve it with infrastructure? And can we design infrastructure to actually get to this land? We also look at things such as social consequences, economic consequences. So we looked at stuff like distance to services. Can we put parks and schools on these properties? Are there hazardous lands there? Are there natural resource lands there? We look at adjacency to other types of land around us. So this is this agricultural adjacency. If we're looking at a piece of property and we ask the question if it develops, what does it do to the ag lands around it? And because McMinnville's surrounded by high-value farmland, any piece of property we're looking at has farming uses around it. So then we do have state law that helps us describe what is the priority in terms of farm uses as well, and then we put that into a data set and use that. So all of this was, we had about 50 different data sets that served these different screening criteria. We had a scoring system of 1, 2, and 3, 1 being poor, 3 being good. And that is what helped us decide what was the best land to bring in in those different priority structures. I wanted to point out how things have changed from 2003 and how they have remained the same. So in turn, this is the 2003 semittal. Where our recommendation is similar to the pink area that did not come in, is you'll notice right here, this what we call West Hill South Study Area was also recommended in 2003. This area right here was also recommended in 2003 and is included in this proposal. These two pieces here are new, and that's because we did an infrastructure study that showed to be able to serve this land, we needed to come up this way from Cozine Creek to serve it with infrastructure, wastewater, and water. And the law lets us bring that land in for that reason. We didn't include this land over here, which we call the Three Mile Lane Study Area, because this is all high-value farmland in Class 2 soils. And Class 2 soils is not what we were, we never got to a point where we were looking for Class 2 soils. And then we included several exception areas that hadn't been included in the first proposal, and that was one of the opponent's challenges to the city was you didn't look at exception areas enough. And so we looked at them again and agreed that they could come in. So in total, you have 921 gross buildable acres serving a future population of 44,000 people. It is intended that 2,500 dwelling units will be on this land, and this is the Phase 1 UGB as well as the Phase 2, so it's both of it together, that there will be 254 acres of parkland, 106 acres of employment land, and 121 acres of other uses. We need to have an implementation methodology. So the state says, "If you come up with a future growth plan, we need to be ensured that you're actually going to do it in terms of meeting your housing need and at the density you say you're going to meet it." So they do look for us to adopt comprehensive plan policies as well as zoning ordinance amendments, some of our regulations, to ensure that we're going to move forward and meet what we said we would do. So in terms of this effort, we have policy amendments and ordinance amendments that are specific to housing need and growth management. There are proposals for you. Most of them were proposals developed by this community back in 2002 and 2003. So the comprehensive plan policy amendments, there are goals, policies, and proposals that are new or amended in Chapters 2, 5, 7, and 9 of the Comprehensive Plan relative to natural resources, housing, facilities and services, and urbanization. And then in terms of zoning ordinance amendments, there are two new chapters that are proposed, one for area master planning process, one the high-density residential zone. This chapter was a chapter that was developed by this community back in 2001, 2002, went through the Planning Commission, went through the city council, went through the community in terms of public process, and it's coming to you almost nearly exactly the same as it was done by that community process. And then there's also Neighborhood Activity Center Overlay Zone. Same thing. This was all developed and went through a fairly robust community engagement process back in the early 2000s. The Comprehensive Plan map is all the land that's in the UGB, so that Phase 1 and Phase 2. Interestingly, we do this effort for a 20-year planning horizon. So by state law, we're looking 20 years ahead. And the intention is the land you bring into the UGB is going to redevelop over those 20 years to serve your community in terms of housing needs and employment needs. housing needs and employment needs. But not one, not one piece of property has come into the city from that 2003 UGB amendment. And so they're all still in the UGB in the county under county zoning. And those are these, those are those lands with hatch marks. And I know there's a lot of people on the line today participating in this meeting, because they receive public notices. And the reason they receive public notices is, we're simply saying, we think the comprehensive plan designation, which right now is residential for these properties, which is yellow, which means this will all develop as residential land, should change to a new comprehensive plan designation that we're recommending called Urban Holding. And the purpose behind that is, Urban Holding is what it means. This property is waiting to come into the city, and it's not in the city right now. And when it comes in, it will redevelop to meet the city's needs. Red is commercial, blue is industrial, light blue is the floodplain. All the property that doesn't have hatch marks is property that the city has not adopted into the UGB yet. But when it does, if it decides to do so, these are the comp plan designations that would go on that property. So one of the things the opponents said when this was being challenged through the court system is, you have all those, you have that mishmash of stuff in your residential comp plan designation, housing, parks, churches, government. How do we make sure that what you, what you say you need, you're actually going to achieve? What we don't want to see is all this land out here just become a sprawl of housing, if you have parkland need as well. And so we agree, and we said, one of the things we can do, which a lot of communities are doing now, is this framework plan and area planning process, where we adopt this high-level framework plan that says, these are kind of the ways these things might develop. We don't know. This is suggestions. And then after the UGB amendment's successful, we then go into an area planning process where we carve off several hundred acres, get the property owners together, get community stakeholders together, and start talking about, how does this 30,000-foot level framework plan look at a 15,000-foot level? So where would parks go in here? And where would trails go? And where would the different types of residential needs go? And then that sets up an area plan that the city adopts. And what that does is, it helps the community participate in what this area will look like when it comes into the city. And it makes it much more coherent in terms of how all these pieces work together. And it's been done very successfully in a lot of other communities. So the other part of that process is, we're recommending that when properties want to come into the city, annex into the city, that they need to have a master plan. And the master plan needs to show how they're going to achieve that area plan that the community put together and adopted. So that's sort of the 1,000-foot level. They're coming and saying, my piece of property that I'm bringing in, I'm going to meet your area plan that you've put together by doing this, X, Y, and Z, to ensure that what the community said they want done in that area will actually be done. To conclude the discussion, this is kind of the urban rural impact. And there's a lot of conversation about this in Yamhill County, which is good. So it talks about the urbanization effort of the city, so the growth planning effort of the city and its impact to the land around it. Forty-four percent of this UGB amendment is exception area. So that's the first area that we're supposed to look at as a city here in McMinnville. This shows the class soils that are associated with the other areas. The total UGB amendment that we're talking about is 2/10 of 1% of Yamhill County's acreage. And I say that to put it in perspective, because a lot of people get upset or nervous about how big it is. It's actually, in terms of its impact to the county as a whole, it's 2/10 of 1%. And then in terms of the impact to the county for EFU land, exclusive farm use land, which we are mostly surrounded by, it is 4/1% of Yamhill County's existing exclusive farm use land. So if all this land in this UGB amendment is urbanized, it will urbanize 4/1% of existing farmland in the county. Every night, we've been entering into the record written testimony that we've received that day, or late at night, in preparation for the next day. This gives all these people who have provided these written testimonies standing in this process. And we encourage this because we are in COVID, and there are people who don't feel as comfortable participating via Zoom or down at Civic Hall. So these are all the written testimony. We send these, for anybody who has sent this to us, we send these to City Council in advance of the public hearing each evening, and we post it on our website, and it gets entered into the record. And so that is the conclusion of my presentation tonight.
Thank you, Heather, for your dutiful scaling down of that presentation. I think tonight was very focused, so thank you. Does any counselor have any questions of staff at this time? This is our third opportunity to do this after a presentation. I would remind counselors to keep the questions that are relevant to the remand. So I will ask any questions of staff of this time from City Council. Seeing none, then we will move forward. We will now start the, hear the public testimony on the proposal. Our role is to listen to the public testimony and to ask clarifying questions when appropriate. Each person testifying will be allotted five minutes for their testimony. We will start with those who have signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. Claudia, who's the first person this evening to testify?
It will be Mark Davis on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and unmute your mic.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Davis. Oops, I'm just being asked to start my video. I'll start that so you can look at me. Thank you. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street here in McMinnville. I've previously submitted written comments, and I'm not going to go through those in detail. I may reference them shortly. But I've been away from the community for a while, and I just returned. I listened to the video of last night's hearing. I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee last time when the 2003 plan was worked on. And I have to say, I have the feeling of déjà vu all over again listening to that video recording. A lot of the same comments. I realized that this is a remand of a limited issue. But I'm concerned that this process has not involved the public as much as it should have. The work sessions did not allow public comments. The Planning Commission did not have any opportunity to look at anything that's of the ordinances in the comp plan that's going forward. And you got to realize that your Planning Commission is on the front line, literally. They're the ones that are going to be developing these, you know, area plans and bringing things forward. They're the ones going to be listening to the public when people come in with complaints. And I really think they should have been involved. A few Zoom meetings in November were fine, but I don't think the public in general got a good idea about what was going on based on some of the misinformation that I've heard in comments last night and that I saw in the record, the written record. Last night, I heard a comment from the Planning Director regarding the parks mentioning the Greenway along the Cozine Creek. I think that's a great idea. I'm all for it. But I want everybody to be really clear that that Greenway land is not what is included in the 254 acres of parks. A 254-acre figure is all supposed to be buildable land. And I've already in my written testimony expressed my concerns about that. We've created about 50 acres of parks in the last 20 years. You know, we need a concerted financial effort to reach the goal of 14 acres per thousand, which was in the parks plan. I have to say, I wonder why the, that 50 acres wasn't removed from the 254 acres, given that it seems like you're doing the same thing to that on the R4 affordable housing land. In other words, there was a, I can't remember the exact number, 72 acres of R5 land in the original plan, and you've got a technical memo indicating that half of that land has already been, or half of that need has already been met, therefore you're reducing that acreage. You know, there was, and that was apparently due to the, looking at the technical memo, that it was going to be where the Neighborhood Activity Centers were. Well, there was plans for R1, 2, 3, and 4 land in those Neighborhood Activity Centers, and I don't see any analysis of what happened to the R1 land over the last 20 years or the R2 land. I mean, I really think that if we're going to go back and change things like this technical memo does, that we should do it for everything, including the commercial land, which was supposed to be part of those Neighborhood Activity Centers that were built. You know, I'm just concerned that affordable housing is being treated as an ugly stepchild, that that's the only thing you're concerned about limiting here. You know, I serve on your Affordable Housing Task Force. You know, the council recently asked us to, or in the last couple of years, asked us to consider people up to 120% of median income under the, the, the things that we're supposed to be taking care of. And, you know, that amounts to about 60% of the land that's going to be brought into the, or the need in the city. And I realize we're not supposed to talk about anything after 2003, but the technical memo does that. And both the draft housing needs analysis and the draft EUA show we have low wages and a greater need for affordable housing. So I'm really concerned that by limiting to 36 acres, that we're not going to meet the need for affordable housing in this community. And I hope you'll reconsider that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Does any counselor need anything clarified regarding the testimony of this speaker? Zach?
And staff confirm that Planning Commission didn't get a chance to review these code amendments and comp plan changes?
Planning Commission has received presentations on this urban growth boundary amendment effort a couple of times over the past year. They have all been CC'd on the documents of this as they've been prepared. They've been provided the website for it. They've been in communication with planning staff regarding it. You actually have a letter in the record from one of the planning commissioners as well.
Is that how it would normally happen if we were amending zoning code?
If I can jump in for a second, Heather. It's not, it's a, Counselor Gary, it's slightly different situation because you're not, it's not an initiation at this point, but it's a remand that's come back down. So it was initiated, it went through the hierarchy to the council, to LCDC, Court of Appeals, back to LCDC, and down to the City Council. So that's the procedural distinction.
So in theory, because it's only comp plan changes and only code related, name, only code changes, word for word, exactly as it was in '03, that's why our current Planning Commission did not change it, or look at it and review it?
Jurisdiction came from LCDC to the City Council, and the City Council took up the remand itself. So theoretically, I suppose you could have, City Councils have broad discretion on how to process a remand. But because of the limited nature of how the City Council was going to handle this, the City Council kept jurisdiction to itself to process it.
So it went up to us long ago, went up way above us, came back down to us, stayed at that level, is a correct way of translating what you just said?
Exactly right.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach, for that question, and Spencer for the clarification. Any other questions for this speaker? Thank you, Mark, for your testimony. Claudia, who would be next?
R. Scott Trent via Zoom.
Okay. Scott, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Scott.
Great. I don't know how to hit the screen to put my face up for you. I haven't been prompted to do that.
I think we can move forward as it is, then.
Great, okay. My name is R. Scott Trent. I live at 5423 Bow Canyon Way in Meridian, Idaho. 83642 is my zip code. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and on behalf of the James Robert Trent Revocable Trust, my father's trust, which holds two parcels of land in the proposed urban growth boundary amendment. This property was initially brought into the family in the early 1920s by my great-grandfather, who bought more land out Old Sheridan Road, and other branches of the family have since sold off those parcels. But today, this land is, you know, I think the addresses are 1695 Southwest Old Sheridan Road and 1721 Southwest Old Sheridan Road. The land, just for someone's reference, is just on the north side of Old Sheridan Road, slightly west of the Grange, which I'm sure is a landmark most people are familiar with. And the total acreage that we're talking about is 50 acres in total. The land initially was used as a dairy farm, and then most recently has been farmed by the Christensen family for the last many years. So I won't go into the various details of the resistance for, you know, earlier processes for that land to be included in the urban growth boundary. That's well documented. But I will say that, you know, the family has watched for well over two decades the development happening across the street, and has just simply made note of that. And we wanted to go on record as a family to say we enthusiastically support this amendment. And there are many reasons why we do. The first one is, is as I read, it's very consistent with the stated land use laws and regulations. The proposal also helps address the city of McMinnville's needs to amend and ensure the future need for housing, employment, and livability needs, as already noted as well. And I guess I would like to point out on behalf of the family that we're very aware that there are a lot of services that are already currently out in that area. So any kind of development that might occur would probably be at a lower cost because services are already out that direction. Of course, the family would enjoy the flexibility to consider alternative uses to the land. But we don't have any plans to do that. We just would enjoy the ability to be flexible should this amendment pass. And again, we just wanted to say we strongly agree with the conclusions that I've read concerning this amendment and wanted to go on record to state that.
Thank you, Scott, for that testimony. Does any counselor need anything clarified regarding this testimony? Again, thank you, Scott.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just one last thing. This is probably just more, something more notable. I noticed one of the city councilors had a UFO poster on his wall. And I am from the Trent family. You know, Paul Trent was on my great-grandfather's brother's side of the family. But the Trent family name is pretty well-known for the UFO photographs.
Hey, keep it weird, dude.
You got it.
Thank you, Scott. Claudia, next?
We had Donnie Mason sign up to speak in person. I don't see him here tonight. So if you're on the phone or via Zoom, can you please let us know? The next is Alexis Biddle via Zoom.
Alexis?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Hill, and good evening, councilors. My name is Alexis Biddle, representing 1,000 Friends of Oregon. I'm located at 454 Willamette Street in Eugene. I'd like to start off by complimenting Jeffrey's Choice of Music at the start of this meeting. Y'all are lucky to have a great city manager that starts off City Council meetings with REM. I wish that experience was a bit more common. First, I'd like to reiterate that the plan before you today is a vast improvement over prior iterations. We deeply appreciate staff's work to prioritize inclusion of exception areas over farmland. I was speaking today to follow up on two key points we mentioned Tuesday and to which the city staff responded to yesterday. Our concerns directly affect the ability of a city to provide more housing that is affordable to more McMinnville households. One of the primary purposes of this UGB amendment before you, being before you today. First, regarding the 72 acres of land need for the R5 zone, the city has revised its previous conclusion regarding the need for R5 land downward to 36 acres, based on an analysis of interim multifamily development that occurred since 2003 within the existing UGB. Throughout this process, staff has stressed that we are playing in the sandbox of the 2003 remand data and analysis. In keeping within the parameters of that remand, we object to the selective reanalysis of the effect of interim development on land need for just one housing type, in this case, the most affordable housing type. For instance, For instance, we do not see any analysis of the rezoning of land that was zoned residential in 2003 that is now zoned for commercial. If the city wishes to revise its analysis of housing need based on interim residential development since 2003, it must do so for all needed housing types, not just one. This includes, but is not limited to, an analysis of whether interim development has reduced the land need for single-family detached housing in the R1 and R2 zone. This would still be outside of the remand, but it would appropriately reconsider the land need for all housing types. Without that analysis, urge the city to adopt the plan that stays in the sandbox and includes 72 acres of land zoned R5. Our second concern remains related to Neighborhood Activity Center guidelines for high and medium-density zones. I'll be calling those NACs. As pointed out too in previous testimony, the NAC guidelines restrict high and medium-density housing to narrowly limited areas. They seemingly prohibit, or at least strongly discourage, high-density housing beyond 1/8 mile, and medium-density housing more than 1/4 mile from the focus area of a NAC. Pointing to the proposed Cop Plan Policy 71.12, which states that R5 land should be dispersed throughout the community and integrated into neighborhood areas so that high-density housing is not concentrated and segregated in one specific area of the city. Director Richards stated that while high and medium-density housing would be restricted to limited areas of the NACs, this policy would ensure good outcomes on the ground that they meet the great neighborhoods principles. The precedence of the positive language of 71.12 does not alleviate our concern that the recommended NAC guidelines are in conflict with this very proposed policy of allowing higher-density zoning in more dispersed areas. The language in the NAC guidelines is more specific, and it's contrary to the stated the great neighborhood principles. In contrast to Policy 71.12, the MGMUP states that, quote, "All R5 lands will be located in neighborhood activity centers." This policy directly contradicts Plan Policy 71.12. If opportunities arise to integrate R5 zoning into neighborhood areas dispersed throughout the community, this language in the MGMUP would seemingly prohibit it. Indeed, the Framework Plan excludes R5 zoning in all but two of the expansion areas along Hill Road that are proposed, that are also the proposed location of NACs, and only envisions high-density housing in very narrowly prescribed portions of these NACs. In other words, under the actual plan you are asked to adopt, R5 zoning will not be dispersed throughout the community. Instead, it will be concentrated and segregated in specific, very limited areas along Hill Road. We reiterate our recommendation that the city strike the specific 1/8 and 1/4 mile restriction that narrowly limit the location of medium and high-density housing within NACs. We also recommend that the city council strike the language on page 53 of the MGMUP that states, quote, "All R5 lands will be located in neighborhood activity centers." Thank you for considering our testimony and for your tireless public service.
Thank you. Any, does any counselor need anything clarified from this testimony?
This is Sal. I'm wondering, Heather, if you would care to give a response. I know it's a fairly, you know, you've just heard that testimony, but I'd be interested in hearing your perspective in response to that, and then after that, I have a couple of comments.
So the first thing I would state is that the original plan and proposal contemplated 36 acres of R5 zone land in the UGB expansion area. So that has not changed with the proposal that's in front of you today. The original proposal assumed that there would be apartments built in the existing city limits that met the needs of that R5 zone land, 36 acres in the existing city limits. When we do a housing needs analysis, it's based on the need for housing to serve the community, and we identify the types of housing that we feel needs to serve the community. And so that's the housing types, and then the zoning is used as a tool in which to achieve that. Because the R5 zone did not move forward in 17 years, because this was challenged for so long, that land that was originally intended for that type of development, for that zone, excuse me, was developed in other ways. And so what we did to ensure that that housing need was achieved in this program was we wanted to make sure we had enough apartment units that had been built within the city limits and the UGB that met the intent of this program. And so that's what we did in terms of reassuring ourselves that the 36 acres of R5 zone land that was originally proposed to be in the UGB expansion area was the right number for the UGB expansion area. If we put 72 acres of R5 zone land in the UGB expansion area, that is a change to the original proposal in terms of land need. In terms of the neighborhood activity centers and the discussion of R5 zone land, what we tried to do was retain as much of the original plan as possible, and then provide text boxes that said what the MGMUP Remand 2020 update does to change that. And so on page 54, after page 53, where it says, "R5 zone land will only be in the NACs," there's a discussion on there where for this 2020 effort, we feel that the R5 zone land will be dispersed and applied through the area planning process. When we did the Framework Plan, the Framework Plan is a high-level conceptual plan, and it's not an adopted area plan. So the intention behind that is that when we go into area planning, we will then decide where that R5 zone land should go. And the reason why we have land need described in Appendix G in terms of acreage is we're bringing all that land need that was originally proposed in 2003 that are in Appendix A and B to ensure that we're achieving that need within this UGB expansion area into Appendix So that's why it's all described that way. I hope I caught that, legal counsel.
I think my main question relates to the need to put those within the 1/8 to 1/4 mile circumference. Is there a reason why we couldn't amend that, or a reason why you disagree with the analysis that 1,000 Friends gave on the proximity to the neighborhood activity centers?
Well, so the intention of the neighborhood activity centers is that you have a high-intensity and high-density node that's occurring in those areas. And so if there isn't a, if, one of the principles in the MGMUP is density, and is to encourage it, and also to have programs that require in certain places. And so my interpretation for what that, what this community wanted when it put this together in 2003 was that those NACs that say you need to have R5 and R4 housing in tight quarters in these NACs, as sort of this comprehensive central node, was a way of regulating that that would occur in that area. It doesn't mean it can't occur in other places, and I want to remind people that multifamily as a housing type isn't allowed use in our R4 zone. That's what we use right now for multifamily development. So it doesn't, if R5, if it can occur in both R5 and R4 zones, the multifamily development type in terms of apartments.
So just to summarize, on that one point, you disagree with the characterization that this absolutely restricts the larger multifamily outside of that 1/8 distance?
Yeah, I do. But I also think for McMinnville, you have scalability. So it's interesting, the high-density residential zones in McMinnville as described, and that's been brought up a couple of times in this process, is 8 to 30 units per acre. That's a fairly wide scale. And so in terms of apartments, it's describing, you know, smaller two-story-type complexes to higher-density complexes. And in terms of the much higher-density complex, watching how this community has engaged with that over the last four years, I imagine that back in 2003, when the community put this plan together, it was very intentional as to where those much more intensive and higher-density apartment complexes should go. And that's what we're trying to honor.
Sorry.
Well, I was going to say, the other thing, just like DJ was pointing out last night, what you don't want to see occur is this sort of long linear module. So another principle of the MGMUP is this smart growth development principle, which was fairly progressive for McMinnville to have that back in 2003. And that smart growth, per principle, is about these sort of compact central nodes. It's not about this sort of long-strip development of apartment complexes on a major arterial. And so by having that sort of concentric planning device, which says that we're going to have R5 housing within an eighth of a mile, within, you know, a concentric circle of R5 housing an eighth of a mile from the focus area, and a quarter mile is the R4 housing, that creates that sort of concentric development rather than a long linear development along the arterial.
And just last question, just following up, thanks. So apropos of that, the reason why we're doing these kinds of things is to avoid the lack of services that have often been available to multifamily houses, like the food desert kind of situation where people can't, within walking distance, access the transportation system or access services easily.
Yeah, and other amenities. I mean, I would challenge you, there are apartment developments here in McMinnville that are separated from parkland, that are separated from other amenities that most residential neighborhoods enjoy. And so the basis of that neighborhood activity center and how specifically it's described, both in the cop plan and the zoning ordinance, and that didn't change. That is what this 2000, that is what was put together in this community in 2003 over several years through Planning Commission and through the McMinnville Urban Area Management Commission and through City Council. And it's meant to be sort of this walkable, smart growth principle of these compact areas.
Thanks, Heather. Just one comment. I did notice in the packet that, or in the plan, rather, that we haven't updated our public transit plan since 1977. Are there plans for staff in the next, you know, year or two to take another look at that in light of the movement on this particular plan?
Yeah, I think, so I do think we have adopted an updated transfer, are you saying transportation plan or transit plan?
Mass transit plan.
Mass transit plan. I do think we have an updated mass transit plan that is not as old as that one, but is still significantly old, and I'm going to have to rely on staff who's watching this to look that up, because I'm not able to do that when my computer's on the Zoom. But I do know that Yamhill County Transit Authority, I sit on the advisory board for that, went through a planning process, and I think I brought this to city council in work session, and it's on our work program to bring forward as an adoption piece, went through a planning process to update the mass transit plan two years ago. Council President Kelly Minkie represented city council on that with me. And so that was put together, Yamhill County Transit Authority and Yamhill County adopted it. It has the newly, it has new, it builds on the service that's currently provided in McMinnville and what the future plans are for that service, and all the individual communities are now moving forward adopting it as well. So that should be coming forward to you fairly shortly.
Thank you, Heather. That's all I had.
Thank you, Sal. Any other clarification needed from this testimony from the council? Seeing none, then we'll move. Claudia, who's next?
Joe Rivera, who is here at Civic Hall.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm Joe Rivera. I'm part-owner of the Mason Rivera Sculpture Garden and Art Gallery on Highway 18 at 20901 Calipane Road. I'm also the owner of Advanced Recovery Corporation, a construction and disaster restoration company. It's been in the air since 2001, and also a real estate investor in rehab homes in Yamhill County. The expansion of the urban growth boundary may impact our business and the quality of life of all residents and citizens of surrounding areas which frequent MACD. It's quaint and wonderful downtown, which has in recent years become more and more congested, almost inexplicably, maybe for a while there. We got a real awakening when we toured McMinnville earlier this year and saw the growth that the city had experienced firsthand. It was apparent that the city's residential districts have way overgrown the commercial areas of town, thus putting pressure upon the roads in town, creating the congestion and the long waiting lines to get into restaurants even before COVID-19. In the study of the planning process, I see two problems in my initial review. According to Oregon's statewide land use planning goals, goal number one says, "Public involvement is a required part of land use planning in Oregon." This requirement is one of the things that makes Oregon's land use planning program unique. The requirement for public participation is written in the first goal of 19 in the statewide land use planning system. Goal one calls for the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process. It requires each city and county to have a citizen involvement program that addresses, one, opportunities for widespread public involvement, two, effective two-way communication with the public, three, the ability for the public to be involved in all phases of the planning process, four, making technical information easy to understand, five, feedback mechanisms for policymakers to respond to public input, and six, adequate financial support for public involvement efforts. The goal also calls for governments to have a Committee for Citizen Involvement, CCI, to monitor and encourage public participation in planning. So I checked the website for this committee, and it hasn't been manned by anyone since last year. It seems it would have been quite in order for the public to have had full transparency and oversight in all aspects of the plan to its completion, especially on a plan to expand the urban growth boundary so extensively. This is a very bad deal. I can appreciate that the public has been given three days of, as we have here recently, but obviously, from the testimony so far, up until today, I'd heard nothing but negative feedback from the public that have appeared, which only became aware of the process when they were mailed the notice recently. I believe you may get a lot of negative feelings in the community if you move forward at this time. I know that folks oversaw this thing back in 2003, but a lot of time and a lot of changes have occurred significantly since 2003. If we're moving forward with this plan at this point, I think the public should have more input. Further to that point, the McMinnville City Charter, Chapter 1, Section 3, states boundaries, "The city shall include all territory encompassed by its boundaries, as they now exist or hereafter, are modified by a majority of voters." So why isn't the major change of boundaries you're proposing not going to the vote of the people, is my question. Seems that there's a, I understand that this went through that court process and appeal, and that there were these certain aspects of the plan that weren't looked at, but I don't know if anybody brought the point that it was illegal to move forward on this without according to the McMinnville Charter, without a vote of the people themselves. My second issue with here, besides public involvement, is that the projections were based upon a growth rate that was assumed that we're going to hit 44,000 population by 2023. We're only at 24,000 or so now, from what I hear. We only have two more years to go, and it seems that this plan is, which was to be a 20-year period ending 2023, it's obviously way overboard at this point. Third, I looked over the economic plan, which has been proposed to create the jobs that would allegedly be available and which are vital to the plan, to not turn into just another urban sprawl period, like McMinnville recently appears to have engaged upon by past leadership. And without a proper economic plan, this current plan will leave us in a worse place than we are now. The economic plan has a grand scheme of helping, has a grand scheme of helping to point out funding programs for new startup businesses and some greeters for the Chamber of Commerce and facilitate a permit process, but not much of anything else. Having owned many businesses in the past, as well as two currently, I can tell you that these measures may not be very effective as they lack the real concrete strategy, especially for our COVID-19 times, when unfortunately, many of our current restaurants and bars and other entertainment establishments may be going bankrupt before this is all over. So we're talking about expanding all this residential housing and this and that, while our business community is in a state of danger, of collapse, because of this pandemic they're going, I think it's a poor time to move forward. Okay.
Thank you for your testimony. Does any counselor have, need to have any clarifying of this testimony?
Thank you, Mayor. I would think it would be helpful for the public if staff could clarify the state... I would think it would be helpful for the public if staff could clarify the state law with regard to why these land use decisions are no longer referred to voters.
So can I do that really quick, Heather?
But Spencer, he's talking about annexation.
Yeah, right. So there's two quick points to make on that front. One is that the statutes he's referring to and the charter provision that he read to the council has to do with annexations and not amendments to an urban growth boundary. So they're two different creatures. As we've kind of talked about the last few days, this is kind of a precursor to any kind of annexation, and then at the point that the territory was to be annexed, that would proposal, a different proposal than a UGB amendment would be coming before the city. The second point, and it's just more for the audience's information than the council's, since it doesn't apply in this case, but in the 2016 session, the state legislature passed Senate Bill 1573, which took away the authority of local governments to refer annexations to the voters. So even though many, McMinnville's not alone, I would dare say a majority of cities have a voter referral requirement in their charters, it's been preempted by the state legislature at this point.
Thank you, Spencer. Does that answer your question, Sal?
It did. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Claudia, who would be next to address this?
Next, it's Barbara Boyer, who's on Zoom.
Welcome, Barbara.
Good evening. I'm trying to start my video, but it's not allowing me yet. The host has not let me in. Shall I, shall I just start?
Yes, go ahead, Barbara, and Megan, if you can work on that.
All right, good evening, Mayor Hale, members of the council. My name is Barbara Boyer, and I reside, hold on, I think here I go.
Here you go.
I reside at 12255 Boyer Road, McMinnville. I am here tonight representing the Yamhill Soil and Water Conservation District. While we are not opposing this proposal tonight, we are before you. We feel you have an opportunity in your values to be thoughtful about conservation, whether it's preserving heritage trees, restoration of wetlands, to preserve their conservation values. We want you to know that we are here to help you in this endeavor. We also understand that this particular map before you tonight is different than 2003, and we are the culprits of taking 174 acres out of your UGB, which are Gwen Farms. So we'd like you, we hopeful, we are hopeful that that piece is helpful to you in the future, and we just want you to know we're here to help you. We'd love to collaborate, and I want to thank you all for your service and your dedication to our beautiful city.
Thank you, Barbara, for that testimony. Does any councillor need anything clarified regarding the testimony of Barbara? Back?
Not necessarily direct, but maybe quick with staff on that. I had lobbied a question the first night, kind of regarding what we could do in this as we expand to look at heritage trees or matters of conservation as we grow the boundary and that leads to development. And my sense was this ordinance is just dealing with the remand, and anything, including language around that, would be best served at later code amendments and later attempts to strengthen our pre-preservation and conservation efforts in that development land, that it doesn't necessarily relate enough to the remand, and so it would be better left out of this and dealt with as soon as a follow-on. Is that, did I interpret my question and your answer from two nights ago correctly?
Yeah, kind of. The, what you can do tonight and as part of this process is growth management policies. And so in the comprehensive plan policy amendments that are in front of you tonight, are, is a policy to do after a UGB amendment, to do a Goal Seven analysis and a Goal Five analysis. Both of those analyses will identify natural resources. We don't have a local wetland inventory. We did use the state wetland inventory for our review of the study areas and identifying what was buildable and not buildable in that regard, but we don't have anything beyond that. And then any discussion of sort of heritage tree inventory or cultural resources would also come in through that process. So one, we would inventory what there is, especially in this UGB expansion area, and then we would develop policies and codes to protect what we want to protect or mitigate what we want to mitigate, that type of thing.
Sorry, you do have a, thank you, you do have, we do have the review of Goal Seven and Five triggered as part of this, or we could add that?
No, you do have it in there already as a proposal, yeah.
Does that take care of your questions, Zach?
That does, and I hope that responds to the citizen comment this end too, in a manner of fact.
Thank you, Barbara. Claudia, who would be next?
David S. Law on Zoom. We'll go ahead and unmute you.
Hello there, everyone. I, the video part does seem to work at this time.
Let's see if they can un-
That's all right, Mayor. As long as you can hear me, that's fine.
We can.
I was concerned about-
Could you, your video's working now, and then could you give your address for us? It's good to see you.
Oh, P O Box 756 Newburgh, Oregon, and 97132.
Thank you, David. Go ahead.
I was concerned on the amendment, did it include all non-point source issues as well as any type of growth rates for your water pollution control plan? For starters, and the other question I had, can I submit a written list of questions tonight, or is there a deadline for it? That would be it.
Okay. Thank you, David, for your testimony. We will be addressing whether we will take further written testimony in our deliberations tonight, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Spencer or Heather?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. That's a council's decision, but if you, at the end of the evening, this evening, if you are, if the council's interested in conducting the first reading, the record will need to be closed before that.
Okay. So David, more information to come as we go through our deliberations this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, one thing I can assure David about is that when the, one of the things that the plan does call for is to update the city's public facility plan after the UGB, a huge, major UGB amendment, and that would include updating the sewer master plan, which would, and the transportation system plan, the public facilities plan would cover stormwater runoff. The city is not currently a, and a, I'm not going to go through the regulatory names, it would just, it's just a, it's just an acronym, but you're not subject to local permitting for your stormwater discharge, an NPDES permit is what it's called, but you may be down the road, you are slated to. And so in, I asked that very question of Public Works, and they said, we know that's coming, and we're paying attention to it.
I'm quite aware of the NPDES permitting process, and I appreciate you elaborating on that. Thank you.
Thank you, DJ, and thank you, David. Claudia, who would be next?
I think Ramsey McPhillips on Zoom has their hand raised to testify.
Okay. And so Claudia, are we, are we finished with those that have pre-signed up?
Yes, we are.
And then are we taking care of everyone that's been in Civic Hall?
Yes, Mayor.
So we are now, so let, before Ramsey starts, let me, let me read about, we're to the point where anyone on Zoom meeting who wishes to testify on this proposal, please indicate your interest by raising your hand in the participants section of the Zoom controls or sending a chat message to Claudia indicating that she would like to testify. When, we will then call on you to testify. At that time, you can unmute your, we will unmute your audio and show your video for your testimony. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. And so we are to the point where we're taking testimony from those on the Zoom call. Ramsey?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Fantastic.
And I don't know if you can put your, your video on, you are on now.
There I am.
Thank you.
I wear, I wear my biggest hat for you.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Planning Support Staff. My name is Ramsey McPhillips, and I live at 13,000 Southwest McPhillips Road here in McMinnville. The southernmost tip of the UGB expansion proposal tonight toes into my 160-year-old farm on Durham Lane. I think that's great that you are including the high wedge exception land formed by Old Sheridan Road, Highway 18, and Durham Lane. It's right off multiple arterials contiguous to already existing mixed housing, within walking and biking distance to many Mac amenities. Sadly, it's a loss of some Class II soils, but compromise is a good thing. That is the way that I think good expansion of UGB should happen. Bravo. However, the rest of the farm plan you have decided to include in the UGB plan that is primarily the southwest of the city and surrounding many of our heritage farms is not land that I feel the land use goals and laws were promulgated to develop. I didn't read that I was supposed to have presented written material before noon today, so I'm just going to launch into some things here to make sure I get them in the five minutes in case there should be an appeal that they're on record. First off, I challenged the remand from eight years ago is still enforceable. You may have received the OK from land use attorneys and agencies, but I cannot see how this is legal. I hope that DLCD pointed you to chapter and verse whereby you can pause a remand for this long. If you can show me that, maybe it's not too late for me to appeal a bad landfill decision. I ask that the council show you tonight where the actual law says you can delay a remand decision for nearly a decade. You know, I doubt, I'm sure you remember the Riverbend landfill conflict was all but settled many years back, but our attorney forgot to answer our opponent, and our win was thrown out. We lost because we missed a deadline that is a time limit statute that we all must play by. Believe me, if I thought we, or for that matter, Riverbend landfill could mothball remands and appeals for however long we wanted, we would have done so. We have to all play by the same rules, and the city should not be given a pass on this key aspect to Oregon's land use lawmaking, and for a good reason. And the good reason for which I speak, by limiting the criteria to one old remand, you are negating the most important law that has recently passed that would have a direct effect on the numbers you are using for your calculated necessity of expansion, House Bill 2001. I formally challenge this body to not pass the UGB expansion plan until you use the House Bill 2001 roadmap set up by the Oregon Legislature in 2019 that specifically rezones for infill densities inside cities of more than 25,000. The city of McMinnville had meetings about this bill, an informal session presentation on September 8th of this year, and it is unacceptable that you would not include this law in the planning for an expansion of the UGB. I challenge you to not impact our generational farming way of life before you pull your own urban house in order. I challenge your right to plop down R five and R four residential zoning on our ancestral agglans before you've zoned the urban areas that the state says you should zone inside the UGB. You are so limited by the old remand, which I do not think is legitimate, that you prevent yourself from following the laws that have come along since 2003, meant to mitigate the very issues at hand tonight, issues of inventory, issues of housing prices, and issues of infill efficiencies. It's a great law. You're about to pass an ordinance for new dense housing, thereby destroying our soils, when what you should be doing is destroying your own single-family housing zones to accommodate multiple dwellings and apartment units. Oregon is the first state to do this in the nation. Where it is done, the city is working, is great. It should work for you. I'm sure, I'm pretty sure it's also the law that you must. I challenge the narrative in the expansion that the development is weighted to development forest lands over open agglans. Forest lands are income-producing crops and no less important than farmland. Stop pitting rural lands against each other that are not yours to take before you creatively task yourselves with ways to better zone your own city lands. House Bill, right. I'm going to have to skip quickly here. I feel as though you are all so frightened of people like me, those of us working to preserve the farm economy, you have not looked inside yourselves for the models from within your own turf. You are supposed to expand if you need to. You have not asked yourself if going up and inflowing by the new statute will lower the number of acres you need outside of the existing boundary. I'm just going to jump to the conclusion because I only have one minute. In conclusion, I congratulate you on including the sliver of land adjacent to my farm into the UBG plan, but ask you do not after, that you, that you do not do that until after denying tonight's proposal. Your remand is too strict a roadblock to properly plan for 2020 land use planning. I ask you to use your own study of House Bill 2001 to redraw four and five zoning in the existing UBG groundy, as is mandated by House Bill 2001, before you needlessly expand it, the UBG south of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ramsey. Does any councillor need anything clarified regarding the testimony of Ramsey?
That's the timing of this, please. I'm sorry. Could Spencer, could you?
Yes. So a couple of things raised. First, about the talk, the ability of the city council to take up the remand at this time. The difference, the distinction in this case is that we have a remanded periodic review work task order, and so the cut, the deadlines that Mr. McPhillips was referring to do not apply to an application in this case, and we confirmed that with DLCD's staff, and they're in agreement with us that the work task and the remand is still live, and the city had the ability to take it up at this time. That's, that is reinforced by the fact that in 2016, the legislature passed a law specifically saying that UGB amendment proceedings that had been initiated prior to 2016 would be subject to the rules that were in place as of the date of the initiation of those proceedings and not later. I'm not sure at that time if there were other jurisdictions besides McMinnville who were, found themselves in that position, but I can assure you that the legislature was well aware of McMinnville because the Court of Appeals decision in this case that came down was news across the state in the realm of land use. And so the legislature specifically passed that law to address that situation. And then in, in furtherance of that, LCDC promulgated administrative rules that stated the same thing in regards to the OARs that we are applying in this proceeding this evening as well. So those are the two, the two substantive legal issues that have been raised that I can respond to for you this evening.
Thank you.
Sounds like chapter and verse to me. Thank you very much. I appreciate the goal posting legislation as well.
Again, any councillors need any clarification from anything resulting from Ramsey's testimony? Seeing none, thank you, Ramsey, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Claudia, who would be next?
We have Patricia Lee Trent via Zoom.
Welcome, Patricia.
Thank you. I want to thank you on behalf of my family, and I just wanted to second the statement of my brother, R. Scott Trent, on behalf of my father, James Robert Trent, of the two parcels of land on Old Sheridan Highway.
Okay, could you give, could you give us your address?
Oh, I apologize. It's 3587 South Durand Way, Boise, Idaho, 83706.
Thank you.
Claudia, and I forgot to mention it. Anyway, I just wanted to second the statement of my brother on behalf of my father, James Robert Trent, of the two parcels of land on Old Sheridan Highway, the 1721 and 1695, to be brought into the urban growth boundary. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia, or Patty. Claudia, who would be next?
Next is John Porter via Zoom.
John?
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, John.
Okay. I'm glad to thank you for the ability to speak, Ty.
Could you, could you give your address for the record?
Yes, I was trying to get my video to start along. My name is John Porter, I'm Secretary for Union House, number- I'm Secretary for Union Avenue, number three, there in McMinnville, Oregon. The lodge address is 235 Upper East Third Street. We own and build in. Our post office box is 453. My home address is 340 Upper East Tows Street, there in Sheridan, Oregon. And we, as a Masonic Lodge, we actually maintain two local cemeteries, which brings me to why I wanted to speak to you this evening, because one of those cemeteries has been included in your urban holding, part of your urban growth boundary. We have it, it's on the west side of town, just north of Horizon Heights. And it's a old cemetery. We've got pioneer bridges in here. We have silverware bridges in here. Our lodge has maintained it for, since it was given to us back in the 1800s. We have no desire to build on it. We have no desire to have housing placed on it. It makes no sense to us that it would be considered for part of your urban growth boundary, because we don't, it's not open for housing. So, we don't intend to request to become part of the city. We do not wish to be part of the urban growth boundary at all. And like I said, it's cemetery land. So, we were rather surprised to be included in the package you sent us.
Kelly?
Is this the property that's, you can get to it off of Wintergreen Drive? It's, I think, I thought it was like an Oddfellow or Masonic Cemetery?
It's a Masonic cemetery. You actually have to go up Cemetery Drive, which is a road we used to own. We handed down over to the county.
I think it's the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that, what you're putting in there, I think it is part of the urban growth boundary, but...
Yeah, just to clarify for everyone, Mr. Porter, that was part of the 2003 urban growth boundary amendment, and came in in 2003. It came in as unbuildable land, so we do identify cemeteries as not potential future buildable land, understanding that that's not the intention for that property. But this effort tonight is not identifying, bringing that into the UGB. It already is in the UGB. The reason you got a notice was because the intention to change the comp plan designation from residential to urban holding on it.
Thank you, Heather. And thank you, John, for that testimony. Claudia, who would be next?
I have Steve here at Civic Hall, who will be testifying.
Good evening, members. Steve Langer, we live here in McMinnville, 4025 Northeast Arnold Lane. We have a five-acre parcel that is right adjacent or adjacent to the urban growth boundary, behind Oregon Vineyard Supply, back in by North American Plant. And then we have a 90-acre piece down along the river, which would be across from Banson's, which is close to that. I grew up in Sherwood. My great-grandfather settled in Sherwood in 1875. Homesteaded it there, and we have seen over the years the deterioration of agricultural land with urban growth boundary. We had walnuts for years that were planted in 1952, a fabulous orchard. They built houses next to us. We sprayed once, and that was the end of it. We had to take the orchard out. So, considering what we're in right now with the COVID and all this other stuff that's going on politically, I would think, I would strongly recommend and hope and encourage you to put a pause on this temporarily, and think of the impact of the urban growth boundary and what it does to those living adjacent to it. It isn't what the growth boundary does, it's what happens on the outside of it. And it's, you know, the dairies, when we moved here 25 years ago, there were eight or 10 dairies around us, and there's none. They moved out because of cow smell. People didn't like it. There's housing. Lafayette has grown. All of this is growing. I mean, maybe that's just the course of things, but please, please consider the ramifications of what you're doing, and think about the long-range impact of what it will do to the wonderful community that McMinnville is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
Any councillor need any clarifying of this statement from Steve? Not seeing any. Thank you, Steve, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Claudia, who would be next?
Suzanne Buchema via Zoom.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to just comment on some of the things we've heard over the past three evenings. First of all, my name is Suzanne Buchema. I'm here with my husband, Richard Buchema. We reside at 1164 Northwest Sunrise Court in McMinnville. The first thing I wanted to comment on was we live on a cul-de-sac very near Hill Road, and we are only two of 11 homes on our street that receive notification of these proceedings. So, my biggest concern this evening, our biggest concern is in the time of COVID, you know, we've participated in hearings on the Hill Road, reconstruction on the Baker Creek, that whole development. And there's always been a robust response from the community. And I don't see that happening, because I'm really concerned that the community isn't aware of what's happening right now, just because of the limited response that I've seen over the past three nights. That being said, one of the comments I wanted to say was, we talked about the need for housing to accommodate, I think, 900-plus residents for new, future jobs. And I wanted to know, I had a question for the planning and the councillors, where are these jobs coming from? Because I see one of the parcels, the remaining industrial parcel, being rezoned as commercial. So, where do we think all these jobs in McMinnville are coming from? Pretty much unaware of them. I'm unaware of anybody in the community that I know who works here that doesn't live here. And that's one comment. Another was, these neighborhood activity centers are, we're saying that the desire is not to have them along arterials. We want to intersperse them throughout the city. So, we've got this high density that just occurred on Hill Road and Baker Creek Road, and we're gonna put one, one mile away down here on Wallace and Baker, and, excuse me, Hill Road. So, they're one mile apart, and I don't see that as spreading them out throughout the community. Looking at the map, I didn't see any land in any other areas. I think the goal is a good goal, because as a retired person, you want to have that walkability and able to maybe go to a store or whatever. But, you know, again, what the goal is and what reality is of what's happening on Baker Creek, you know, the strip, it's a little strip mall that's planned up there, and there isn't a grocery or anything that fits. I think I heard somebody refer to it as a food desert. Well, we may be out in a food desert, but, you know, our main supplier out here is Drapers. And how long are they gonna exist when we're building, you know, we're gonna be surrounding them with houses? Because up there, I see, I think I heard a tire center and nail salon, so don't know how that helps our needs for groceries. The other thing, I'd like to see, one of the other testimonies tonight was about impacting the environment. And I know this is, it's been said that this is just the initial presentation, and we'll have more public input on the plans that come, you know, the planning that comes along when we're actually going to decide what occurs on this annexed land. But there are, again, I'm gonna use the example of a Baker Creek 100-year-old-plus oak trees that have all been cut down. They're gone. I used to walk there quite a bit, and they're all gone, that were leveled to make room for this development. So, as you know, that's one of the trees in Oregon that they're disappearing. So, you know, we've just kind of taken those away and taken those out of our landscape. So, I'd like to see, you know, some kind of plan to keep some of our forests in place. And, yeah, I guess it's all the comments I have, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Suzanne. Is there any councillor that needs clarification regarding this testimony? Seeing none, thank you, Suzanne, for your testimony. Claudia, who would be next?
Next, we have Debbie Robertson via Zoom. She will also have Sarah Lynch with her, helping her as she has, she's hearing impaired. If there's any follow-up questions.
Thank you. Debbie, and I think it was Sarah?
Give me a hand. Yes, hello, Mayor. This is Sarah Lynch, and I'm with Debbie Robertson.
Could you guys introduce yourself with name and address?
So, this is Sarah Lynch.
My name is Debbie Robertson.
And we live at 2964 Southwest Redmond Hill Road.
Go ahead.
Hi. We just moved to McMinnville recently, and the one thing I brag to all my friends about is what a beautiful town it is, with all the farms, wineries, wetlands, parks, how everything is so green. And I came from a big town, and as towns grow, so does crime. You have to have a place for kids to go. You've got to have jobs. We have only a few, two restaurants, just a couple of stores to shop at. The streets have to get bigger, and they're gonna be busier. It's just, and especially now with COVID, we're very lucky here that we have a smaller town, and we haven't had the bigger cases like they have in all the bigger towns, not only in Oregon, but all over the United States. I feel very fortunate to live here right now, the way it is. It's a beautiful town, and I hate to see it grow and just kind of outgrow itself and have nowhere to go. Or things for people to do, or places, you know, to eat out as families or shop. Usually, you have to go to other towns to shop.
And also, Mayor, the previous speaker mentioned that they only received the notice for this meeting. We actually heard it from a friend who's also a neighbor about this meeting. We did not get any notification regarding that there is a hearing going on. So, we feel like, because we were not part of the meeting, we are left out as a part of the town. So, I can probably see where it's a limited amount of people to show up and hear about this.
Everybody here is so nice. The neighbors are nice. I haven't met anyone that hasn't been really nice. It's a wonderful little town, and I hate to see it grow. It's just, you don't see towns like this, well, anywhere in California. I haven't been that many places, but I really like it here. But I just hate to see the whole infrastructure have to grow, you know, the roads, and then police, and firemen, and everything has to grow. Anyway.
Well, thank you for that testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any councillor need clarifying regarding this testimony of Debbie or Sarah?
Can I ask staff a statistical question that's not directly related, but in a little bit related, just as a comment, some of these have come up regarding just general growth? How many times has McMinnville's UGB expanded since McMinnville was founded? And Heather, if your staff has to look that up while we continue Zooming.
They might. I mean, I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you it's four or five. And the, I used to have a slide on this, and the only real substantial amendment was the 259 acres in 2003. There's been a couple of smaller amendments along the way, one for Joe Dancer Park, one for, one that had an acreage swap for some land to go by the Evergreen Museum Campus and came out of the, south of Three Mile Lane.
And those would have constituted as UGB amendments?
Yeah, yeah. We can look it up, but it's not very many.
Four or five is a helpful number for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Claudia, who would be next?
Mayor, that's everyone who has requested so far.
Thank you. And then we have one additional. Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to testify on this proposal? If so, unmute your phone and let us know that you would like to testify, and we will call on you. Please state your name and address for the record. So, is there anyone that's not on Zoom but on phone that would like to testify? Not seeing anyone? Then, this concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does the staff have anything they would like to add to the record at this time? Or does City Council have any additional questions of city staff? Wendy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a question for Spencer. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about how the R5, taking into account, so one of the things that we're bound to do, because it's a remand, is stick with, in the sandbox, like Heather has said before, how the R5 adjustment, based on what has happened, kept us in the sandbox, and how, why we didn't have to do that with the other residential zoning?
Yeah, we talked about, staff talked about this earlier today, and so I think I'll give a first whack at it, but if Heather, Amanda, or DJ want to jump in after I add my piece, we'll see if that's necessary. But essentially, the acreage that's being spoken about is a, is a number that was generated as part of the methodology that determined how much, you know, there was a methodology that went into the number of housing units, high-density housing units that were needed. And when, and when we went through that methodology, the numbers spit out a certain amount of acreage. And so there's been discussion for the last few nights about the city changing the goalposts on that one. In fact, that's not the same. The underlying methodology has remained the same throughout. What's changed are some factual circumstances, but we're not adjusting the methodology. And then, as Heather pointed out tonight as well, the UGB expansion area originally included that 35 acres, or 36 acres, and so that's not being changed.
Yeah, I'll jump in. This is Amanda. In the 2003 findings in Table 71, it specifically says that the additional need is 36 acres of R5 zone in an expanded UGB. So, it wasn't 72 acres that was going to be in the expanded UGB in 2003, and that's also the case now. It's the 36.
Great, all right, thank you. Oh, and I do have one additional question. Heather, have we heard from anybody else before tonight that notices have not gotten through or anything? Is this the first we've heard anything? Anybody's mentioned anything like that?
I did get a phone call from a gentleman today who told me that his notice went to the previous property owner, but after some discussion, we learned that he had just transacted on the property recently. And so, we, what we use for our notice, two things, I'll make back up. Let me back up for a minute. We notice all, all directly impacted property owners. So those who are being proposed to come into the UGB, and those, much like Mr. Porter with the Masonic Cemetery, who are already in the UGB but would get a new comp plan designation. We then noticed every adjacent property owner within 300 feet of those, of those directly impacted property owners. And so that was 1,000 notices in total. By law, what we use as the database to send out the notices is the database that the Yamhill County Assessors Office has. And so they, if there's been any property that's transacted recently, they're not caught up on that. And so that's why this one gentleman I talked with today, I think, didn't get the notice. The previous property owner had gotten it. I'm not sure about what we just heard tonight. I need to look up their property to see if they're within that 300-foot perimeter where they would have gotten the notice. It did get noticed in the newspaper three times. The newspapers run several articles about it as well recently and then over the past year, too.
Great, okay, thank you. That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor, for now.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other questions for staff?
This is Sal. I just have kind of one clarifying question. And this is more for the public, I guess. So there've been a lot of people raising concerns or complaints about the idea that, you know, we don't really want to grow. Why are we doing this? We shouldn't be doing this now. You know, what's the methodology? And I guess I just like to kind of have maybe some kind of final word from staff. My impression is that we're required to do this by state law, that the models that we use to make these assumptions are based on the Portland State forecasting. And we're limited in terms of the assumptions that we can use in this particular process because it was a remand. But all of this is happening according to a fairly consistent formula. Isn't that right? I mean, the number of acres, as you've described it, the number of houses, the amount of growth that we're expect, that we're planning for. Is that a fairly accurate characterization of really what we're trying to do here?
Yes, so by Oregon law, cities need to plan for 20 years of population growth to ensure that cities have enough land for, to absorb that population growth because the intention of the Oregon Land Use System is population growth will occur within cities at a higher density than it would in rural lands so that we can protect farm and forest lands in Oregon. So we will always be planning for growth as cities. It's even, we've heard in testimony over the last couple of nights about the smaller cities around us. They also need to plan for growth and get their assigned numbers to plan for as well. The one difference with this, Council, is this effort in terms of the coordinated population forecast that we're, that we're planning for, that 44,055 people, that was done through a local planning process with Yamhill County. It was actually challenged many times for several years until we got to the 44,055 people. And it's only just recently that state law changed it so that the forecasting would be done by Portland State University because cities were challenged for so many years on their coordinated population forecast. So the state wants to see cities grow because, again, that's where they want to see the population happen. And their, and the challenge, the challenges along the way for cities to be able to grow in their UGB to absorb population growth has been problematic. We have a housing deficit supply issue in the state of Oregon of 100,000-plus homes. So, so the state passed legislation that PSU is going to determine the population that each city is going to plan for, and that's not appealable. So that, that's no longer tying up the system for several years. But this particular process we're under right now was not under that PSU process. It was under the previous coordinated population forecast. And that went through a couple of different challenges, oppositions, and remands up and down the chain until we got to an approved number. And then your second, let me see if I remember your other question in terms of UGBs. We have to, by state law, plan, plan for growth. UGBs are intended to accommodate population growth at a higher density than, than the rural lands. And the other thing you've heard during this public hearing process over the last three nights is the conflict and tension of that premise. So you have people testifying who are not supportive of higher density, even at the, I guess I would say, the lower densities that McMinnville sees around it compared to other communities in Oregon. And then there are people testifying who feel that there should be much higher density in McMinnville. And that's kind of the tension. But that's, that's your local decision-making process that you can make within the statutory framework. So there is statutory framework as to how you make decisions about density and planning for it. And those, those are all done with that housing needs analysis that we always reference back to. Cities need to, by law, look at higher densities within their cities as they plan for growth. How high in terms of the density you want to plan for is your choice. But it is always pushing cities to go into a higher-density program.
Thank you, Heather.
Did that satisfy the questions, Sal?
It did, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I understand that you're trying to get that information out for those that haven't been with us over the last couple of nights. So thank you for asking that. Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? Not seeing any. Then does the City Council wish to continue or close this hearing? And we can indicate by someone making a motion to close the hearing.
A move that we close the hearing.
And do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Kelly and seconded by Remy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
Are we going to have discussion on the motion at all?
We can, yes. Go ahead. If there's discussion, let's go ahead and have discussion.
Well, we had at least one member of the public who requested that we keep the record open so that they could make additional testimony. I don't know that that would be determinative in any of the councillors' decisions, but I did just want to make the observation that we did have at least one request to keep the record open.
And my understanding, and Spencer, you can address this, or Amanda, if we leave the record open, we cannot move to having a first reading tonight. Is that correct?
Mayor, Mayor, I, you know, I realize I misspoke. I meant the second reading in the passage. You could conduct the first reading and leave the record open. It does need to be closed before passage.
Okay, I understand that then. And so I wanted to clarify that and get that out on the table. So we could, we, do we have the ability to keep the public hearing open for written testimony only?
Yes.
Yes. So let's have a discussion if there's any, anyone that would like to address, and Sal, your question there. I know it was brought up for those that might want to have written testimony included.
I guess I'll just comment that, that I will support the motion as long as we keep the record open for written testimony and that we don't move to a vote this evening, a second.
Reading?
Yeah, so Mayor, just, just for clarification, Spencer, they, they can, they can close the public hearing and still keep the, the public record open for written testimony.
They can close the, they can close the hearing to public testimony, but leave the record open for additional written submissions?
Yes, okay.
With a time limit? With a time limit so that we would have real time to review any additional written testimony, even if that time limit falls over a weekend and non-regular business day so that we would have some time to review any additional testimony before next Tuesday?
Yeah, that, that's a decision that's up to the council. That's a, the council has discretion in that regard. And, and I'll just mention procedurally, I'm assuming that the council's interested in doing that. But to, to answer a question before it comes up, it's, it's not an obligate. Because this isn't the initial evidentiary hearing, there's no obligation to do this. It would just be as well at the council's discretion.
Okay. We do have, we do have a motion on the table. And now that we have an understanding, do we want to, do we want to change that motion to closing the public hearing but keeping the record open?
Yes, I will amend my motion to that.
Okay, and you feel comfortable, Remy, of seconding that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I, I hear that other members of the council would like that. And so in terms of moving forward, and I, I would like to do that as well. I would like to put, if, if, if it feels reasonable to the council, a 24-hour time limit on that to give us plenty of time to review additional testimony, but not just to review it, but then to be able to ask staff questions and receive responses from staff.
Is, is 24 too long? And puts it late in the day Friday? Today's Thursday, right? It's late in the day Friday? Is it like noon tomorrow? To give staff a chance to answer before the end of the weekend? So, you know, we've got it all weekend and can read and then respond over the weekend or Monday?
Yeah, it would be great if it was before normal closed business hours.
I, I would throw out noon then tomorrow, noon Friday, unless anyone objects.
I would be good with noon. I definitely want to leave the written record open. But I would be good with noon if staff thinks they could turn something out to us over the weekend to, to read any, any response.
I have noon to it.
So we have an amended motion. As, as I understand it right now, what we have before the council is we would like to close the public hearing and leave the record open until noon Friday, December 4. And we have a second on that. So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Indicate by saying nay. So we have a unanimous decision, six to zero. So the public hearing is now closed. Do we want to have any further discussion at this point by the councillors on this application?
Does that mean a first reading?
We're, if, if we want to have discussion before the first reading.
Okay.
I think we should have discussion before the first reading.
Okay.
What do you got, Garv?
Over the last two nights, DJ had mentioned a few times that once they identified that they were able to meet the needs of the acres in the current configuration, they didn't look at any other lands for this UGB expansion. And so my question would be, you know, why, why didn't we look at all the possibilities? If there is other possibilities that don't put such a burden on the southwest corner of Mac and the transportation infrastructure or lack thereof that we have in that area? If staff, DJ, or Heather could pick up that?
So, um.
Go ahead, Heather.
Okay. So, Councillor Garvin, how we looked at land was, is one, prescribed by state law, and then, two, really prescribed by the Court of Appeal decision. So we were only able to look at lands based on their soil classes first. And then if we met the need within that soil class, we couldn't look at another soil class. And so what DJ was talking about is we had, once, when we identified that West Hills South property, which is mostly Class III and Class IV soil, so that's the lower tier that we should be looking at, once we identified that that was suitable and adequate for meeting the need, the only way to bring that in was to bring in those southwest properties that were just south of it to serve it with wastewater infrastructure. And so when we looked at those properties, we were then done. We'd never looked at any Class II soil properties or Class I soil properties, which were the remaining properties available to look at because law would not allow us to do so. So it's kind of interesting because it's not based on necessarily, because I've also gotten a lot of questions about location of hospital and this growth planning. It's not necessarily based only on those types of decisions because the soil classifications is a big driver of how we look at these, these different study areas. Did that help answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just going back through your slides tonight to try and...
It's probably not in tonight's slideshow because we tried to limit it. So I can, I can bring up another one that, that walks through. It was those different, if you remember the maps where we showed you the map with green lands and then the map with yellow lands and then orange and red lands? We never got to the orange and red lands. Once we identified, we needed that orange land that was just, just below the West Hills South.
I guess what precludes some of that, what you said tonight was Bunz Village property from being there instead of some of the property we're bringing in? That's green and this is...
Right. Bunz, Bunz Village property, when we looked at it for adequacy, didn't meet the adequacy test. Is that where it fell out, DJ? I don't remember. So, and there's a variety of reasons for that. One, it's almost fully developed out. You have to cross a river to provide infrastructure to it. We looked at cost to do that. There should be in your record a study area finding for Bunz Village that walks through all those issues and then why it was screened out. So it wasn't deemed adequate to meet the, the city's need, even on the first screening level.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. And then the appendix E, the zoning ordinance amendments, I recognize that we need to, you know, provide zoning and what, what the state wants to see us develop. But why do we need to have this overlay zone in this UGB amendment? And why can't we do that once we understand what our updated TSP plan lays out when we do that in the next year or two?
So the overlay zone, if you're, if you're concerned about location of those relative to transportation impact, the overlay zone isn't geographically located anywhere. It's on, on the framework plan, we just drew circles where we thought it might happen. But the plan is to do the transportation system plan before the area plans occur, to do the wastewater public facility master plan and update that. So we have a better understanding of what impact would be and where there would be the best location for those. But the overlay, the north, the Neighborhood Activity Center overlay is just an enabling tool in the ordinance so that when, when, when that property is identified, it will be identified in the area plan. And that overlay zone won't even be attached to the property until it annexes into the city because it's a city zone. Just like the R5 zone. The R5 zone won't be attached to any property until it annexes into this, into the city and becomes a city zone unless there's other property within the city that wants to rezone into that. And the same could be true for the Neighborhood Activity Center. But whenever we do a rezone, that's what we call an upzone, where the... So let's say it's an R1 piece of property, and the property owner wants to rezone it into the R5 zone. And that's in our zoning ordinance now, so they could, they could apply to do so. They have to do a traffic impact analysis to show what that increased density and intensity will do for intersections within a perimeter of, of that development as well as the major system, transportation system.
Again, I guess my worry for that is that they're going to be comparing that to a dated plan, much like my recollection of Baker Creek North and the Zoom Waltz property where there is questions by multiple councillors of the, the datedness of that TSP plan.
Yeah, so that will be important for council as we move forward. We, we can move forward on that transportation system plan as soon as it's funded. We're, we're happy to put that together because we hear that all the time as well.
The other thing that I saw in here was it looked like you were moving annexation from the city council's purview to more of like an administrative staff role. Is that, am I comprehending that correctly with the 48.9?
No, it's actually the opposite. The, the, and if it's, if you read it that way, then we look, we need to look at how we wrote it. It's, it's the opposite intention. So the proposal is to move annexation into only the city council purview. And it will be a decision of city council to have an annexation agreement with the property owner as to what they need to do to annex into the city. as to what they need to do to annex into the city.
Okay. That's what I have for right now, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any other discussions or items of comment from councilors? Zach?
A couple, hopefully, not tiny, in-the-weeds questions. Since we started, I know you've had myriad responses to our nightly salvos of questions, which I appreciate, and in some of those, I think you've actually proposed clarification to text, including maybe what, I'm going to forget which number, but I think you've proposed an amendment to some of the language already, is that, have we changed what we're voting on to compensate for those proposed language?
Thank you for bringing that up. We did bring two recommendations for changing text in the comprehensive plan policy. It was in the memo that you received yesterday from us. One is for comprehensive plan policy number 86, and that was to rewrite it entirely because there was some confusion as to what that meant. And then the other one was for comprehensive plan policy 71.09, and that was a new amendment to make it compliant with the recommended zoning ordinance amendment for the location of R4 high-density zoning. So right now, it's limited, the way the comprehensive plan policy is written, it's limited to adjacency to major arterials and collectors, and the way the zoning ordinance amendment is written is that there's the ability to locate it within 600 feet of a intersection with a collector, and so the comprehensive plan policy was not mirroring the recommended zoning ordinance amendment. And that zoning ordinance amendment was original to the plan, so we wanted to make sure those worked together.
And Heather, if I could just add, another important thing related to that is the ability to use higher-density housing, R4 in particular, outside of those arterials in some of these activity centers and on minor collector streets within neighborhoods so that you can disperse some of your higher-density housing through the community, which is consistent with the rewrite policy 86.
A side question I just thought of, Heather, are you able to keep DJ out of retirement? Because he has just been a treat to work with this entire process.
I know, so you guys all tell him that he put off, thankfully COVID happened because he put off a trip to France, so I agree entirely.
Thanks for that answer. I think another one I have is, how do I phrase it? So we have several, we have several policies and plans that we've done, that we've been operating on for a long time, and frankly, due to what I would call wise leadership in troubling times of the Great Recession, we went through a concerted effort to have deferred maintenance on some long-range planning efforts to allow us to have these conversations as a fully functioning, as a very healthily functioning city out of the Great Recession. So I think, you know, the transportation system plans, parks and rec master plans, and several other plans, as well as our facilities, are dated, and we're running on fumes, and we're past deadlines for things, and it's led to frustration, both while you're driving and while you're giving testimony, right? So I think, and as you pointed out in one of your answers to Councilor Garvin, you know, when we can fund it, we'll do it. I'd like to look at ways we can add even comp plan policy language to not only encourage us that, you know, after a UGB is passed, within three to five years, we'll fund them, but also add language to say, and we'll look at funding, additional funding mechanisms to do that. I think parks, we can look at additional funding for parks to move those forward for studies and update the master plan. I think we should look at additional funding mechanisms to get the transportation up and rolling. I've heard, and I think all of us could agree, that we've heard great demand for an update to the TSP, and it's a worthy endeavor, and we should look for ways to fund that soon. And I know we're coming through another time that's challenging for city funding, but we should look at alternative ways that we should fund that in the very near term. And that's part of the hard work I think we have to do to follow up on this, if we're moving forward on this. So I think we should add, the common language that we've had before is look at alternative funding mechanisms for these policies that we need to update. So I'm hoping that can make its way in if it hasn't already.
Thank you, Zach.
Could I just say something? I mean, looking at alternative funding systems really isn't part of the overall question tonight. I mean, I get what you're saying, and I agree, but, you know, it's really not what we're trying to accomplish tonight, at least from my perspective.
I think I disagree. You know, the comp plan has plans, policies, and then ways to achieve those underneath it, and I've seen it in there before, that look at ways to fund these plans. And if we're going to list, update the plans, I think under that as a program to achieve that, we should write ways to fund that.
Any other discussion around that?
I have a question for Heather, Zach's then.
I think he's waiting for an answer, but I don't know that one will come this evening, so let's go ahead, Adam.
Heather, could you speak to any of the points Patty O'Leary made in her, the four points she outlined in her public testimony that you emailed to us this evening?
I guess I will ask you for which points you would like me to speak to.
The buffering zones in particular, because we've heard testimony from other landowners or people that would be affected by those, not as far as like the "not in my backyard" type testimony, but just as far as, you know, high-density housing coming up against farming practices like silberts that are spray-heavy and, you know, how those would still function and coexist with one another.
So I'm trying, I'm bringing up her specific comments right now, but, so a couple of things. After last night's public hearing and the testimony we heard from Jennifer Redman, who owns the farms, where 28 acres is part of this proposal and the rest of her farm is not, and she brought the same concern, we did go back into the comp plan policies to see if we had any policy language relative to urban-rural interface. And one of our great neighborhood principles is urban-rural interface, where we talk about the need to make sure that when residential developments are built, that there is a buffer between the urban development and the rural, the adjacent rural activities. What we haven't done, so that's the comp plan policy, so that's in there, and McNimble comp plan policies are criteria for land use decisions. So right now, we could use that as a tool with developers to say, you have to show us how you're buffering against these adjacent agricultural uses. But the other thing we ideally want to do eventually, there's a big work plan for planning in McNimble because of all that deferred planning, is to write code that's specific, clear and objective code as to what that buffering looks like. We don't have that for you tonight, and we wouldn't be able to provide that for you for this effort, but having a policy that states the need for that is already in the great neighborhood principles. Now, we have been working on additional language. If you want us to bring recommended additional language to you, we could send you a member random tomorrow that has some proposed language that you could discuss at your meeting on Tuesday. It sounds like you're going to be bringing this up on Tuesday anyways, and so we could send that to you if that's of interest to the city council. I will share with you, I was talking to someone else today, if you think about McNimble, the whole perimeter of McNimble has an urban-rural transition. We have housing development up against farmlands all around McNimble today because we're surrounded by farmlands, and we're essentially built out of our housing land at this point in time. A lot of times, the farmland is buffered from the housing development by road, so I think about Hill Road and all the housing development that's up on the, up to the western, east of Hill Road, and then the farmland that's west of Hill Road, you see on both the north and south sides. And then we also have up on Redmond Hill Road, we have homes built up right against farmland that's being actively farmed today as well. So there are already opportunities and things that McNimble has been doing to accommodate that conflict in terms of the urban-rural transition. But there is a policy existing in the comp plan right now as a great neighborhood principle that the city of McNimble will ensure that there is a buffer between urban uses and rural uses.
Okay. The other point that I was curious in her testimony was with Third Street, she talks about Third Street being our original NAC, and, you know, on this urban growth boundary, it looks like we're going to, if it's built out how it's laid out, there'd be three new NACs and... Trying to understand why we need three of those and how is breaking those up more efficient than operating as one, given that what I see is that NAC at the corner of Hill Road and Second right now still isn't maximized its potential?
No, it hasn't, and part of it is how that's planned and laid out. So the NACs, the MGMUP does identify the downtown as the central NAC for this community, the largest, and there's language in the MGMUP as well as the comp plan policies that encourage the highest density to occur there in terms of that type of retail development that we're talking about, that people normally see in downtowns, as well as housing surrounding it. The other NACs that are described in the MGMUP, and right now, in this proposal, there's two and a half. In the proposal in 2003, there were four of these, so there's less than there were before, is that it's setting up this sort of smart growth principle, which is, and especially in McNimble, after all the discussion we've had about transportation here, it's a means of bringing some services and amenities to people where they don't have to get in their car to go access them. So it's not typically your destination services, like a city center in downtown would be, but it's the little things. It is the laughing bean bistro that I myself walk down to to get a salad or coffee or something like that. It is office space that's occurring right now on Second and Hill Street where there are people who, well, I think our council president at one point in time had done this, but who have their office in that area and walk from their home to their office. That's what those other NACs are meant to do. It's meant to really put together some smart growth principles where we're not reliant on our cars to get everywhere, which is then overtaxing our infrastructure that we can't afford to continue to build to support that type of transportation congestion.
Yeah, I can just say, my eye doctor's down there, there's several physical therapists I go to at different times. There's a lot of amenities, I mean, there's hairdressers down there, there's several CPAs in the area.
Right, but it doesn't prevent you from utilizing the downtown, and I think that's the concern, is that it's competitive to the downtown, I think that's, Councilor Garvin, what you're getting at. And so these NACs as described, and I also think that's one of the reasons why there's so much specificity in the comp plan and the zoning ordinance for these NACs, and again, remember, this was put together by the community, we didn't put together this specificity for this. It was done over about five or six years with this community going back and forth, talking about it, but it's so specific, I think, to control how big those really are, so that they aren't competitive with the downtown. There's a lot of language in the MGMUP about supporting and protecting the downtown as a vital city center for this community.
Can I also make a comment about that, specifically about the Second Street NAC? One of the things that I've observed, one of the things that is important for making those NACs successful is, and one of the things that they struggled with on Second Street, is the residential development needs to support the commercial uses. So having that design, that Second Street community did not have the help of having an overlay that helped to develop the residential and commercial together to where the stores would have enough people coming to them to survive, right? So they had, because they didn't have that high-density housing right around it, and they didn't have the help of having the plan of the overlay district, the commercial places that tried to go in there struggled. And so it's coming out of it some now, but I think if we had had the overlay district, that would have been much more successful because the commercial, it would have been able to support commercial activity that would serve a community with that high-density around, and then the medium-density and the way they have it laid out here mutually supports each other.
And to that point, Wendy, and I think what's happened at West Second and Hill Road is that you've seen a lot more professionals go in that are destination areas that bring people in. We've got doctors, we've got dentists, we've got vets, we've got a lot of the professional services there because of the density that wasn't there, and the growth out on the west side was much later than the commercial.
Yeah, specifically food places need to have a lot of foot traffic to be able to survive, like, so, it's great that that laughing bean was able to survive out there. I know that that was a struggle to get people that were food-serving to be able to survive out there.
Not to mention a grocery store, I mean, I noticed that that in the write-ups was one of the key features, a small grocery store. I would agree, it'd be fantastic to have it there.
So, I mean, that kind of leads to my next question, as far as locating those four all on that southwest corner when you account for Second Street as well, it seems like it would dilute them to some extent.
So, again, it's two and a half of our plan.
Okay, two and a half.
Southwest area, and I wouldn't say Second Street is an NAC as described, and I think Mayor made a great point, it is a lot of destination uses right now, vehicular destination uses. So in the NAC discussion, there's discussion about separation of the NACs in terms of how far, one, how far they need to be separated from the downtown, and, two, how far they need to be separated from each other. And again, and it's very specific in the MGMUP, in the comp plan policies and the zoning ordinance. And again, I think that that was a very deliberate and intentional dialogue that the community had about how far apart these need to be so that they can be supported and be able to move forward. But remember, we are talking about serving a population with, I'm trying to think how many households, because like 1,500 households in that southwest area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Adam, for those thoughtful questions. Any other questions for deliberation before we move to the first reading?
No, thanks, Mayor, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, if we do not have any further discussions, we have not had the first reading of the ordinance. If no one objects, I would like to suggest that we consider the first reading of ordinance number 5098. Does any council object to having ordinance 5098 read by title only? So Amanda, would you please read the ordinance?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5098, an ordinance adopting certain amendments to the McNimble Comprehensive Plan Map, Comprehensive Plan, and McNimble Municipal Code, Chapter 17, approving the McNimble Growth Management and Urbanization Plan and its appendices, and adding land supply to McNimble's urban growth boundary.
Thank you, Amanda. I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5098 to a second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And Councilor Stossens, do you want to indicate any amendments?
Yes, as amended, we're going to have the second read, wait, the second reading on Tuesday.
on Tuesday and leaving the record open, is that what I need to add?
The policy 86 and the policy 71.09.
Oh, sorry, policy 86 and policy 71.09. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Kelly. I will ask for those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Point of order for a quick discussion item. Since we're having the first reading on an ordinance as amended, does that immediately preclude us from further amending the ordinance? So if we come up with the alternate wording for another policy, now are we unable to do that now? So have we thus negated any ability to change on the second ordinance?
Amanda or Spencer?
Are you talking about on the second reading?
Right, if it's first reading, second reading of an ordinance, and we've just had a motion to approve and we're going to vote on that ordinance as amended, right, change these, those two policy languages? And if we're going to punt on the second ordinance until Tuesday, and then if we pass the second ordinance, we ratify it. But if we're going to open it up to more discussion internally, because we're leaving the written record open, and we find compelling reason, either in discussion or from the public, because we've left that written testimony open, and we find a compelling reason to change the verbiage of another policy or plan in, in what we're voting on, are we now unable to do that?
You have the ability to do that.
And would that have to go back to a first reading and then a second reading?
No. You can do that in the second reading.
Interesting, okay, cool, thanks.
Any other discussion before we call on a vote? Seeing none, then I'll ask for those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Mayor, I'll do a roll call real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilor Drapkin? Councilor Drapkin?
Aye, sorry.
No worries. Councilor Garvin?
Nay.
Councilor Stossens?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Minkie?
Aye, aye.
Whoa, forced abstention from the old man.
Sorry, Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a, it, it passes with dissent, and so ordinance number 5098 passes with a vote of five to one on its free, first reading, and will be brought back to us for a second reading on December 8th, 2020. So we will, we will follow up at the city council on Tuesday night, and I will read the verbiage on Tuesday night of the decision that's been made, because we've not done that at this point. So I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the planning department and staff for the heavy lifting that they have been doing over the last number of months, but specifically this week as we've been putting this together. I'd like to thank city council for changing your reading habits for the last couple of weeks, because we put a novel in front of you that was very large and technical. I would also like to thank our citizens who I think has had a lot of opportunity to weigh into this process. It has been a process that we've been working on for well over a year, and, and working on the supplemental pieces that built the foundation that has brought us where we are today. So many meetings, so many outreach from citizens that have been involved, and, and I just think it's the McNimble way. I, I know there are many that feel during a COVID time that it's not as easy to participate, but we still need to do the business of the city. We can't shut things down, and this is so critical to where we need to go. So with that all being said, thank you, and we will be back together on Tuesday night at our regularly scheduled city council. We have a work session at 5:30, I hope you saw that change that we'll be meeting at 5:30 as we go over the fire district plan in detail, and at 7 o'clock, we will be back at city council.
And Mayor, Mayor, before we wrap up, just as a reminder to all councilors to not have any ex parte communications regarding this topic since you will be voting on Tuesday.
Thank you for that reminder, Amanda.
Are we still allowed to ask staff questions at night? Still send staff our questions?
Yes, just not with the public.
Right, then staff can respond to our questions?
Yep.
Those are, those don't count as ex parte communications. Council communications with city staff don't count.
Right, I guess just the last, how we've had the opportunity the last two nights to send questions to staff, and staff comes up with lovely responses because they did that.
You can also do it during the day.
Questions. I find my questions have a couple extra miles per hour after this meeting.
Again, thank you everyone. Thanks, everyone, for your participation over the last three evenings. Stay, stay, stay safe and thank you so very much.
All right, Amanda, let's see that mask. Oh, come on!
Forgot it.
Dude!
Thanks, everyone.